Yeah, I just called in when we got over here.
We're gonna have drainage?
I guess so.
We are?
We have to finish the meeting.
We're gonna do drainage?
Oh, you got some drainage to take care of?
Okay.
I'm tired.
Yeah.
These long meetings are...
I know. It's, you know, it's the lights that get to me. I get headaches from it.
Yeah, yeah.
I need glasses. I have some at home, but they're, they're like, my wife's cheetah glasses.
Yeah, yeah.
Need to get some of my own.
Yeah.
My crescents for the day.
Do you wanna do those?
I don't.
Yeah, we can. That'd be fine.
Josh coming?
We'll have to wait for him. I think he is. I don't think he left yet. Yeah, we can get him passed out.
Thank you.
Did Josh say he was leaving or?
I think so.
Tyler, feel free to come up. Once Josh gets back, we will get started here.
Hi, Tyler.
Morning.
Good morning. It's warmer over here.
A little bit, yeah.
It is getting a little chilly over there.
Me too. Yes.
Do we wanna, I call him or wait or, you know?
Give him a call?
Yeah. See if I can find him quick. How's Tyler today?
Pretty good. Pretty nice one outside for, I mean, temps came down compared to those near seventy days, but... I'll still take this, I'll still take this, what, three days before, two days before Thanksgiving? That's not too bad, so.
Well, it couldn't be better.
Well, right, yeah, but I would, I would hate to ask for too much.
Well, you could.
Less I be disappointed, you know?
You go anywhere for Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving comes to me. That's, that's my, uh, that's my responsibility of the, uh, of the family dynamic.
Okay.
They come here, Christmas is back home. My sister gets a lot of the, uh, summer holidays, so. I kinda like it. I, it's like, they, they descend on my house. They, they have, nice enough to leave it the way they found it, so it's like, it's just chaos while it's there. Every year I joke and I get a little bit closer to be like, I don't hear the keys, I'll be up at the bookstone or something, you know? Have fun. Hot, hot's on the left, cold's on the right. I'll call if you need anything. Just, just leave. But no, I kinda like that. I don't have to go anywhere, do much than vacuum a couple hours before people show up. They like to control everything else, so it's like, I don't, I don't hardly even bother going out and doing anything, so. Just keep the lights on, that's the only thing that I do around for Thanksgiving.
Sounds like a good life.
Yeah, it's not bad, yeah. As long as you're okay giving that agency away.
Yeah.
It really is, uh, it's really hard to complain too much about, so.
Yeah, he was downstairs.
Well.
I guess, yeah.
To read the requests.
Yeah, we could do that. They're all in the packet. So Roger, you wanna start?
Sure. I got one here from Gerald Siewell. We have a culvert that's failing across the driveway. But, uh, we need to do drainage districts together. They need to like, replace it and I went, I went out and looked at it. It's a little narrow, so it's thirty foot now. I think we should replace it with a forty foot, so he has a little more room to drive across with equipment. And the road department, I had Scott look at it. He's gonna do it.
Sounds good. Carter, read yours.
I have, uh, number ninety-three and DD one thirty-two for Gary Lick tie. Got an outlet pipe that's bent in the east bank of the ditch there and needs, needs it repaired.
Okay. We got a couple. Number ninety, you have ninety-three. Okay, I have ninety-two, John Peterson, uh, possible plugged or broken tile in Springfield fourteen. Number ninety-four is for televising lateral eleven tile like we talked about last week. And then number ninety-five is one, Roger had called me on for Irene Brandt, um, twenty-four inch tile. Wash out in the field and stuff, and it's already fixed, I believe, so.
He wanted the request number, so Marge can mail it.
Yep, so that'll work and that's the three I have, so I would entertain a motion to approve these requests.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Um, Tyler, you wanna give a brief intro on the informational meeting or?
Yeah, yeah, I, um, got the, uh, information from, uh, Marge. I was in contact with Tammy as well for a petition that had been, uh, approved and sent our way, uh, a week ago for an investigation of an improvement project on Drainage District Four, lateral forty and forty-two. It's a kind of a wide branch system. Um, in a, a brief conversation I had with Kyle about it, there's, there is a desire to see an improvement option looked at there and, uh, something, hopefully, the, the thought was get something, uh, met. The desire from the petitioner was to get a meeting on this yet this year. Get something, uh, quick before the weather turned. And in recent years, it has been my preference, and I think improvements go a little smoother when we are able to, as the first step on an improvement project, get the district together for an informational meeting before it gets too, before it gets too far. Uh, I, one of the things I hate the most is getting a boatload of engineering down on something that even though it only takes the one petitioner to get an improvement going, because there is the possibility and threat, it's not really a threat, but the, the, because the opportunity there is for the district to have a remonstrance on an improvement project, uh, that is started by one person, I, I like to, even though it is one more meeting that you gotta call people into, I like to get a, a feeling from landowners that way rather than have the opposite happen. Uh, and, and spend a bunch of money for nothing. So, uh, that is the, the thought there. For informational meetings, of course, there's no decisions that can be made. We can, as the engineer, get, uh, gauge opinion and feel the appropriate response path to travel, uh, even if that just pairs down the, the scope or lengths, anything that way. Um, but I feel very comfortable being able to have, uh, maps, some capacities, and very, uh, ballpark figures for an informational meeting that could happen, I think, one of the first two weeks in December.
No. Um, I think sixty sub four is an example of a recent project we did with an informational meeting. It just kinda set the tone, uh, from the get-go. I think it's well worth the general conversation, so I would make a motion to set a place for the boardroom on December fifth at ten AM for an informational meeting for Drain Four, Lap Forty and Forty-two.
We already have a budget request scheduled for ten o'clock AM.
Okay, ten thirty would be fine? Would there be a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion, Ian? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously.
All right, perfect. Thanks all.
Thanks Tyler.
Discussion with our auditors next.
Before, before we go there, I've just finished drainage. Uh, I did get a, uh, email from, or a message from Colin Klingbile with Jacobson Westergaard in regards to how the PFA one was going. Um, this he sent November sixteenth, so four days, or was it five days ago? We started the field inspection yesterday and are planning on going again tomorrow. Started at the south end where damages aren't quite as bad. Um, good news is that the ditch banks have healed somewhat since the drone video was done. Uh, the biggest issue where we were is a lot of materials in the bottom of the ditch, so. So they're, they're out there doing inspections right now.
Good to know. Anything else for Drainage? Marge, do you have anything for us? Okay.
Okay. Um, I just have, um, we got a bill from Verizon from Derek. Um, Derek said that it was a phone that Kyle, um, had gotten phone and, um, subscription that Kyle had gotten. He wanted a county phone. Um, in our county policy, it says, um, that a department head can decide whether they want to have a county phone or they can get reimbursed for their private phone. Didn't know, um, in my mind, supervisor's not a department head. Um, I did talk to Todd briefly and Todd had said if, that in his opinion, the board, you know, would need to talk about it and decide how they wanted to proceed. So, um, the bill has been submitted. Um, didn't know if it was something that you guys, um, wanted to, I mean, we can't approve it today, but before I did anything with it, I wanted you guys to be aware of it and see how we go from here. Todd did say that, you know, if one supervisor has a phone, maybe everybody wants a phone or, you know, um, he didn't know. Um, but thought that it would be a good idea to talk about it.
Yeah, I tried to run down and chat with him very briefly before, um, did not get much more than about thirty seconds with him, but I, I did ask Derek to get me a phone order with a number of recent events and, um, I mean, examples of county business phone calls I get at all hours of the night. Friday night, nine, ten o'clock at night. No, no urgent need behind them. That's just one specific example, but, um, based on our policy that we approved previously, I, and the fact that we, every time we submit claims for mileage reimbursements or anything else, we all sign as department heads. Um, I've never been told anything differently, so. I know, I believe I asked specifically when we approved this policy if we needed any more detail on who was allowed to make that decision on who has access to that and it was said that it was left up to the department heads and they can make that decision on whether it's justified or not. So considering all the other employees for, that work for the county that have a county phone, I did not think it was much of a discussion. We have it in the budget for telephone. Uh, we have a policy that outlines how that decision comes to be made, so.
There's, there's written policy in the written policy. Been, been here for twenty years, never, ever has one supervisor ever asked for a phone. You're gonna have a phone, Kyle, whether you're a supervisor or you're not. Makes no difference. You're still gonna get phone calls if you have two phone, cell phones or one. Doesn't make any, but.
Not business calls on personal number.
You're nitpicking the taxpayers for all this crap. Go over to Washington DC, how you wanna cellphone? What are you gonna want next? Clothing allotment? Because you're a supervisor? Come on, Kyle.
I think you're making a much bigger deal of this than it should be.
There's no reason you need a cellphone, allowance from the county.
So why, why do other employees have cellphones? They also get personal calls. The exact same justification that you just used for everyone else should be applied evenly across the county as a whole. If it's not being applied evenly, what's it there for?
So you want all five supervisors to have a, get a county cellphone?
I feel that should be up to a personal decision and I did not for the first five years.
Uh, I'm glad this is on tape. I want the boards of the county to see how you're nitpicking the taxpayers in this county for nickel and dime for every little thing you can get up.
I feel it got to a point where business and personal needed to be separated. It's, I guess it's that simple. Um... I don't, I don't know how many calls you get at the hours of the day that I do.
What difference does it make if it's, you gotta, you have two cellphones, you're still gonna get them.
No, I'm not. You can set up notifications to turn off at a certain time.
Well, then turn your phone off.
That, that's what I will do with a personal and work phone split. I will carry my personal twenty-four seven. Work phone will be turned off at a certain time.
You're a county supervisor. You're, you're on notice twenty-four hours a day. You should, people expect you to talk to them anytime of the day or night. I've never told people I, that I would not talk to because it's five o'clock in the afternoon. If they wanna call me at nine o'clock at night, call me on Sunday afternoon, I talk to them. I'm elected to represent them. They should have, they should be able to get ahold of me anytime they want to. You're there to serve the people. Don't forget who, who you work for. You work for the people, the taxpayers of the county, and that means you should be available anytime.
I think I've stressed that probably more than most behind this board have and I think looking at the price tag per month for one single phone is a drop in the bucket out of our entire budget and I could, since you mentioned trips to Washington DC, I'd be happy to remind you of the financial impact that I shared in my presentation at that time, if you would like me to.
Whatever. Put on your agenda. That's something I can't support.
What do we have budgeted for a, we, what is our?
I think.
Line item for phone or?
I don't know. Let me see if I can pull it up here quick. Don't know if we have anything in the budget for your phone.
We do.
Okay.
If you guys wanna vote to have a supervisor, let's blow the budget wide open. Let's, let's spend a hundred dollars a month for all five. Let's get a phone for everybody. I'll send some, sort one supervisor out. Let's get one for everybody.
Well, this, this bill looks like this.
They're gonna need to turn it on and let it set home. Let us taxpayers pay a hundred dollars a month for a cellphone for me. I don't have to use it. I'll just keep using my own.
We could talk a lot of budgetary items if you wanna get down to that.
Are you looking for the budgeted item, Tanner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Based on the pages in my budget workshop, we have a thousand dollars budgeted for telephone.
That's always been for this moment here, for long distance calls and et cetera.
How much do we spend usually on a?
Says nothing in there about cellphone.
Let me pull up that. Report here.
This bill shows an equipment charge of fifty-three forty-nine, which I don't know if Derek can speak to that. I don't know if that's a one-time thing. Um, I was under the impression that we had, um, phones provided and we just paid for the service, but that has a monthly charge of forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
You guys, we are talking about a cellphone. Would you be able to come in?
So this bill has.
Hey, what do you got?
This bill has a charge for fifty-three dollars for equipment?
Yep, the order box, it's one time for the case.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the monthly charges to the service?
Tax, forty-two dollars about, yep.
Okay.
Same as our public safety plan, that's what we get on, so.
Okay.
I'm not finding a telephone line.
Another question, I guess, I have. Every time a new supervisor gets elected, of course, they have, you have to buy a new tablet.
Depending on how far out they are, yeah. We try and get five to seven years on it, equipment, so.
How much is a tablet?
Fourteen hundred about, that's what we've been spending, somewhere in that range.
Did you look at our budget just for last year?
Yes, I still have it at home.
I'm not finding a budget for telephone.
I can bring my sheets in next week if needed.
Well, I'm saying, unless it's somewhere else.
Believe it showed we had used like sixty dollars the previous years-ish in that ballpark, but there was a line item for telephone.
Well, my fear is telephone is all going to Derek, so did we take all of ours out and give it?
Nope, cellphones go to the departments.
Right, but we haven't had cellphones, so we wouldn't have needed it.
We still would have had this, so we should have maintained a line item.
So the sheriff's department pays for all their own. Uh, every other department that has cellphones, like engineer's office has their own cellphone plans. I, IT only pays for one line of service for the IT department. We don't pay for any of the departments.
Maybe that's something, should just look into seeing what's in the budget and, and I guess if it's, if it's in the budget, it's in the policy. I mean, it's what it is for now, but as far as me, that's a budget discussion we can have and, and, uh... I mean, I hate to put it harshly, but we're all elected and if people of Cassuth County don't like our spending money, I guess that's usually the answer for that.
Well, I hope they hear it loud and clear, so I can say.
I hope, I hope they do on many topics.
So, do you want me to pay it? Do you want me to?
Well, see if it's in the budget and, I mean, we're gonna have to, if it's a claim, what's the due date?
Eleven twenty-three.
Eleven twenty, so that's two days.
We don't have a po, we do not have a specific policy for cellphone for the board, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to first, uh, put on the agenda to have a cellphone policy first, because all the other departments specifically say cellphone. Ours has always been for that phone right there, not for cellphones.
So it's the copy of the policy?
I'm gonna say if you're gonna do it, unless you have five of them, I'll leave mine turned off, but I'll charge the, the taxpayers forty-five dollars a month for the phone I'm not gonna use.
So this was approved and adopted April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Would have been the exact same board members we have now. Policy serves as a guide for determining how Cassuth County employees will be provided with or compensated for mobile phones. Overview: Employees of Cassuth County have different needs for communication at different times during a day and or week. This includes speaking with members of the public, contractors, utilities, law enforcement, emergency personnel, distributors, as well as gathering, receiving, transmitting and, and transmitting work-related data. To accomplish efficient management and effective communication, certain positions within Cassuth County require the use of a mobile phone at all times for job-related communications. Other positions have needs for, for a mobile phone during work hours, while other positions do not have a need for a mobile phone to complete their work. Policy: Each department head shall determine which positions require the use of a mobile phone at all times for job-related communications and positions that have needs for a mobile phone during work hours. For positions that require the use of a mobile phone at all times for job-related communications, Cassuth County will provide a mobile phone. For positions that have needs for a mobile phone during work hours, Cassuth County will offer the employee in the position a choice of being provided a mobile phone by the county or be reimbursed twenty-five dollars per month for the county use of employees' personal mobile phone. That is verbatim our exact policy on this. From April eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Based on it.
Put it on the agenda, we'll take, I want everybody to be on record voting, get your name for it. I want, I want the public to know who's, who's spending money like that.
But it doesn't have to be. Paid in two days? So we need to either.
Well, it's not gonna be paid in two days.
Well, no, because we didn't have it on the claim.
No.
So we're gonna get charged a late fee.
Well, we just got it last week, so it's not like we've had it.
You get, you get thirty days during the day, uh.
So we just got the phone, no, so it's not like we've been hanging on to it.
Okay. Okay, so I, I guess I'm just asking, are we gonna get charged extra for waiting?
Yes, I'm not really sure why it wasn't part of our claims and discussed at the beginning of the meeting, but.
Because in my opinion, you're not a department head and so, in my opinion, this needed group approval.
So how do we turn in claims for everything else?
You just sign on the department head line, it doesn't make you.
We are all individually elected.
Well, at the beginning of the year, I remember, there was an issue with claims from, that Galen hadn't turned in mileage, or he turned it at the end of the year. But in order to have him get paid, I think I had to sign off on it because he was no longer a department head.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and signed up off on it, it was fine, but, but, uh, so I guess, what, are we not department heads then, or?
I see you as one person of a board that makes decisions as a group, and so that's why I wanted you to.
Do we have somewhere where that is outlined though, or no?
I'd like to see a legal.
As an auditor, I have a right to make a decision on whether or not a claim should be paid or not. And I wanted to see if that was something that you guys wanted to approve.
Department head acts as one, we were, we are, we act as a board, we are just one-fifth of the vote. None, not one of us is one person entirely, as Tammy is in her office, she's an individual, we are one-fifth of an individual here.
Oh, I get that, I get that, I just was curious as far as how that worked, I mean.
No, no one person on this board makes a decision on their own. That in itself constitutes, says that we are not department heads. And again, you're, you're accounting supervisor, you're held to a higher standard than, than, uh, than other, the other officials. Because we, uh, we are supervisors and people expect to talk to you anytime of the day or night, weekend, weeknight, whatever. You shouldn't be so arrogant to say that I'm not gonna talk to anybody after five o'clock in the afternoon.
I think that's pretty bold of you to say.
That's right, because that's the standard I hold myself to. I always told people, I'll never forget who I work for, I work for the people of the county, not for myself, not for anybody else. I work for everybody who put me in this seat and I will always remember that.
Well, let's, let's discuss it then, I mean. No use keeping talking today, let's. Discuss it next week. See what's in the budget, see what the policy says and how we're supposed to operate on making that decision as a board. Whether that was an okay thing to do or not. Because really, if it, if it was an okay thing to do, then regardless of my opinion, I mean, like I said, I mean, I guess if the taxpayers don't. Don't like it, they can go Kyle at office, but it's, I, how, how should we handle that as a board, so? I'll, I'll look into it.
Talk about it next week. Hey, did you have anything else for our discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, Jack, committee report?
Next week.
Roger.
I had no meetings.
I didn't either. Okay, um, I did have a EMS working group for NACO, um, yesterday. There's, there's a number of things that are, um. Being discussed at the federal level, um, we are exploring how to. Support or engage with some of those ideas and work with members of Congress to benefit rural EMS. So I don't have any real specifics, I do have, um. I can get the presentations and get some notes as far as some of the bills that were being discussed yesterday, but. Otherwise, it sounds like a couple of them may have some promise for helping out rural EMS across the whole country, so. That's all I had for today. Is there anything further for a meeting here? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously, eleven, twelve.